...regulatory outreach and an example of government micromanaging private business. We therefore ask the city to reject this ordinance and work with the business community to find a better alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan McElroy. Then we have Speaker nineteen is Scott Colstead. Speaker twenty Erica Sanchez Sanders. Speaker twenty-one Matt Bartholomew.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to share some ideas. My name is Dan McElroy and I represent the Minnesota Restaurant Association and the Minnesota Lodging Association. The boards of each of our associations have adopted policies in support of two key goals that are in common with this proposal. We do not want our employees to come to work sick and we do not want our employees to lose money when they can't work on their normal schedule. We think we've suggested a better idea. We think we also can tell you about some technology that is working, a more creative approach than this mandate. We know there are a handful of cities, about twenty-four out of twenty-five thousand cities nationally. We think Minnesota can be a leader in adopting a better way to solve this problem, a more creative approach. Our average member is open a hundred hours a week. I have members open a hundred and sixty hours a week. About half our members today are using automated scheduling for their employees. I'd ask you to take a look online at wheniwork.com or hot schedules dot com. These are very powerful tools for allowing employees to trade shifts, to add shifts, to pick up shifts when we posted, and they really work. We also understand the strong belief by advocates and by perhaps the majority of the council that the council wants to change the law in Minneapolis to create an environment where we really solve this problem. We suggest a different approach that we call full disclosure. We would support an ordinance in Minneapolis that required all employers with ten or more employees to have a written sick or safe leave policy, sick and safe leave policy, that could also be paid time off, to be mandated to provide that in writing and in a language appropriate format to their current and future employees, and most powerful to make it available to their guests and to anyone else who asks for it, so that we fully disclose how we handle this issue. I also want to make clear that it is against state law to allow an employee in a restaurant to work front or back of the house when they are sick. It's also a violation of law for the employee to come to work sick. We think that makes it a little different in our industry, but we think a full disclosure law would make a huge difference. So we ask you to adopt a more creative approach. We'd be happy to work with you on the details of that. We're excited about solving a problem in the best possible way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Colstead, then Erica Sanchez Sanders, then Speaker twenty-one Matt Bartholomew, then Speaker twenty-two Chris Anderson. If people could go ahead and physically line up if possible.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam President, and City Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Scott Colstead and I serve as the Executive Director of the Institute for Athletic Medicine. IAM is a network of twenty-eight outpatient physical therapy, hand therapy, and chiropractic clinics located throughout the Twin Cities with four locations serving the city of Minneapolis. Additionally, we employ athletic trainers to provide injury prevention, evaluation, and management at high schools, small colleges, and youth sport tournaments across the Twin Cities. Our reach extends locally and across the state. With respect to our athletic training program, we hire casual athletic trainers to fill in when our core staff, who are eligible for paid time off programs, when they are unavailable due to illness or to help us otherwise meet demand. Hiring casual athletic trainers affords us the flexibility and the capacity to serve the community effectively. Technically constructed, however, this is an extremely complicated ordinance for organizations similarly situated that cross municipal boundaries as part of their work. For example, it is not uncommon for organizers of youth sport tournaments to host venues in one community but rely on venues in other communities. For example, specifically, a hockey tournament hosted at the Excel Energy Center and the same day can also be hosted at Mariucci Arena. This creates unique disparities within a job class, in some cases within one employee on the same day. As a result, to be incumbent on IAM and other similarly situated organizations to develop new processes, procedures, policies, and highly complicated administrative infrastructure to manage sick time benefits for casual athletic trainers who work in a variety of locations all in the same day. We ask that you reconsider the technical construction of this ordinance and we look forward to answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Speaker twenty Erica Sanchez Sanders, then Matt Bartholomew, then Chris Anderson, then Speaker twenty-three is Stephanie Darrow.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council Members. My name is Erica Sanchez Sanders. I am here on behalf of NAC and myself. I'll put that out there. There's a lot of speak regarding this ordinance on numbers and, you know, infrastructure and things of that nature. So I would like for you to empathize with me as just a person. I am a college student. I am attending Hammond University. I am going for my bachelor's in law and I'm hoping to build off of that. Now, in this, I have to work. I have to provide for myself and my family, so I decided to get jobs to work. I don't need anything too fancy. So I work for a corporation, a holiday corporation, if you will, work my way up through those rankings. Now, that goes from being a cashier, truck, everything in between. You guys know the work. Through this, I become a night manager. I get benefits that I have earned and I'm able to keep. Unfortunately for me, I have leukemia and I'm diagnosed with kidney failure at this point in time. I have to attend dialysis and then eventually chemotherapy. Now, these are unforeseen circumstances and although they do affect everyone, including my employment, they affect me more so than anyone, my mother, my family, and things of that nature. I was unable to care for myself properly due to working. I was unable to ensure that I had what I needed. And as a result, I angered my supervisor. In her anger stage, she decided to take this out on me. I went from certain hours of the day where I could manage myself and get over things to working all these hours that I had no idea. And y'all, had I had earned sick time, I would have been able to care for myself. Had I had this, I would have been able to earn what I earned and then to be able to show. Instead, these people wanted the customer to see me sick. They wanted to see me crawl, they wanted to see me suffer, in my personal opinion. And it pissed me off. I work. I don't ask for anything. I don't beg. I'm a proud woman and I work for what I get. I should be able to reflect that in any way possible. This ordinance isn't just speaking out to me and my personal issue. And all of us here, we're not talking to you as in this is a little slip up here, a little slip up there. People are here. We are here to say something and to speak to you, not on a numerical scale, but on an empathetical scale, on an interpersonal scale, on a level that we know that you can understand. So Council Members, Madam Chair, I ask you to just think about that and go to your decision.
Thank you. Is Speaker twenty-one here?
Yeah, Matt generously switched with me. I have to get to work in about ten minutes, but I'm, my name's Eli Edelsonstein. I live in South Minneapolis.
What is your, what was your speaking number?
Forty-eight, we switched.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for noting that. I have a short story and just some notes, but I want to echo that there's a lot of numbers and a lot of things being put out here, but there are a lot of people that can't speak to that, that can speak to the empathy issue. And I'm a person who has worked in the restaurant service industry, both in the back full-time as well as part-time in the front of house. And about a month ago, I got a respiratory virus that was pretty bad and I took off a couple of days of work unpaid. I was able to switch some things around, but didn't take off as much as I probably should have. And regrettably, I was working maybe, I was healthy enough to work, but I was working with food and worked my best to keep clean. But I think had I had the option in that emergency sort of situation, I definitely would have taken it and it would have protected me, my coworkers, and the people that come through the restaurants that I work in. There's been mention of other cities that have enacted these sort of changes and I've worked in them before in Oakland and in San Francisco. And I think there's like a lot of scare tactics that happen and I just want to, I've worked with management of restaurants in those cities and while it was a challenge, it wasn't one that was insurmountable. And I think that with the creativity and smarts of the business owners in this city, we can do it and it shouldn't be seen that way. And then finally, I just want to say that I'm not here alone. I'm here on behalf of people in the kitchens that I work with, people that couldn't make it here and whose voices aren't heard. Someone mentioned it being as a public health issue and I think that is fair, but it's also a racial justice issue and an equity issue. And this city suffers from some of the worst disparities there. So I encourage you as a council to think about those people in your city.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-two and then Speaker twenty-three is Stephanie Darrow. Speaker twenty-four is Peter Van Klinget. Speaker twenty-five is Rebecca Ellingsworth. And if those speakers could physically come-
Hi, my name is Chris Anderson. I own the Outback Steakhouse in Bloomington. I currently support what you're doing. I offer paid time off to all my employees. I think it's a great benefit. I think I recruit and retain top talent by doing that, but some of the details are concerning to me. I want it to work. I want you to come up with something that doesn't have adverse impact as far as tracking and if my employee that's employed in Bloomington is working in Minneapolis and how am I going to track that and why I offer paid time off, is that going to be grandfathered in or is it gonna, I mean, there's a lot of details and many of the people that have spoken before me say that's where the focus needs to be on the details. I support what you're doing. I think it's right. Everyone should have paid time off, but you got to make sure that the details work for all the different industries. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-three and then if Speaker twenty-four, Speaker twenty-five, if any of those speakers are here, I'm asking you to please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephanie Darrow. I am the Health and Education Outreach Coordinator at Gandhi Mahal Restaurant as well as a resident of South Minneapolis. And I'm here on behalf of Gandhi Mahal Restaurant, supporting earned sick and safe time. Part of the reason that we support this is because we already offer it. I'm very, very fortunate to work at Gandhi and our owner Rahel Islam treats us all there as family. And that's honestly what it's like working there. We are a giant family. And part of being a family is taking care of your other family members. And I'm very lucky to be able to say that, but I shouldn't be one of a few people in this room who can say that. Everyone in this room should be able to say that. The other reason I'd like to speak out in favor of this is that as the Health and Education Coordinator and as a graduate student in Medical Humanities, I think it's incredibly important to remember that this isn't just an issue of equity, which it is. And it's not just an issue of doing the right thing, which it is. And it's not just an issue of good business because taking care of your employees is good business, but this is also an issue of health and safety. Because working in food service, which I do and I have previously to working at Gandhi, you don't want ill employees coming to work. You don't want them interacting with customers. They not only put their fellow employees at risk, but they put customers at risk. And we've all seen that in this past year with the issues with Chipotle. Now, I have had to come to work sick before, not at this current job, but at previous jobs because I couldn't stay home. I couldn't afford to lose that paycheck. And people shouldn't be put in that situation and we shouldn't be putting our customers in that situation. So this is an issue that I think is incredibly important for us as individuals, for us as businesses, and for us as a community at home. So thank you very much for listening to me and I hope that you vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-four.
Hi, my-
You don't, you can just stand normally on the feet there and it will pick you up just fine.
Yeah. My name is Theodore Van Connet. I live in Ward Seven and I have a chronic health condition that's affected me for many years and has caused me a lot of trouble in my work environments, both as a substitute teacher in Cleveland and here when I was working for Jimmy John's as a bike delivery person. And so I would have to miss weeks of work at a time, every so, maybe about once a year when it got bad. And I had no security net from either of those places I worked. So I first of all, of course, didn't get paid for any time I missed and second of all, suffered repercussions for time missed, was encouraged to come into work sick. And this policy is so important because especially Jimmy John's, you know, they're not going to change because it benefits their workers. They're not going to change because of public health because these are very profitable businesses. They can afford it and all they really care about is making more money. So we need to, we need to make them do it. We need to act because it's not going to change otherwise. So it's really important that you all pass this.
Thank you very much. Speaker twenty-five Rebecca Ellingsworth. And then after that, Speaker twenty-six Jay and Jason Raffey. Speaker twenty-seven Julie Kearns. And Speaker twenty-eight, I'm sorry, I can't read the names.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Ellingsworth Avila. I think I come on a different perspective perhaps than most people do. I am a single Mexican mother that came here when I was eight years old. I grew up with a single Mexican mother. I grew up very poor, taught myself through college waitressing, and now I've earned the right to own a restaurant. I own Tinto Latino and Cocina, excuse me, on the corner of Lake and Bryant. Oh, you like it, yeah. So I commend what you're doing. I really do. I think everybody does and I can't imagine, my employees are like my family. I don't have much family here and I can tell you that I treat my servers, my staff, everyone as if they're my brothers, my sisters. What I'm disappointed on is the way you've handled this. You've divided our community. I've met with many of your constituents in your very own wards that don't speak English but yet own businesses that you never told about this. I helped them translate for them, you specifically, in Spanish. There's Somali communities, there's Mo'k communities that months after didn't know about this. I don't think anyone disagrees, at least I'll speak for myself, that people shouldn't be taken care of properly, that they shouldn't be treated like human beings. If someone is sick, I don't want them there. I want to take care of them like as if they're my family. What I'm disappointed in is that you've divided our community. We are one. I don't see this as a race issue. I don't see this as anything but a humanitarian issue, that we should stand up and treat people with common decency. I don't want a law telling me that I should have to do that. You are punishing the small businesses for the actions of large corporations here. I agree. I've seen it. I've worked my ass off since I was fifteen years old. I've been treated poorly. I know what large corporations can do and they, the gentleman that just spoke, you're right, they don't care. They just want to make money. I just don't have the money. And if you can give me tools to implement this the way you want this implemented, I will do so. Perhaps we can get grants from you to cover some of the costs that I'm going to have to spend. I have a second job. I don't just own a restaurant and that's how I pay for my son. My single, I'm a single mom. No one helps me with my son. So I get it. I grew up like this, but I would like help from you financially on implementing this because I can't afford this right now. And I just started a restaurant a year and a half ago. Maybe five years from now I can and I promise you, I will do everything I can to implement it the way that you can, but to ask companies of six or under that are part-time and full-time, I don't know how you're expecting people to not go out of business. That is the argument I have. I don't think anybody here, and if you do, if you think that your employees shouldn't be treated decently, you shouldn't be in business, period. So I don't think anyone disagrees with you. The disagreement is how you've handled it and I will share with you, I'm very disappointed that you didn't translate documents. I don't see any translated documents here today. I don't see other ethnic communities being here-
And if you could start to wrap up.
Well, I'd like to be listened to because you shut up my door pitching Bernie without even recognizing me after I've had a handful of conversations with you. It's disappointing you guys are not listening. Listen to your small businesses because if you don't, we're going to end up being the land of ten thousand chains. Small business is what makes our economy thrive here. Please remember that.
Speaker twenty-six Jason Raffey. Then Speaker twenty-seven Julie Kearns.
Hi, my name is Jason Raffey. I own a landscaping business in northeast Minneapolis called Field Outdoor Spaces. We started eleven years ago and when we started the business, we thought that mostly we were going to hire transitional employees in their twenties. Well, now we have twenty-five employees. Most of them have stuck with us. Many of my employees have been with me for seven to eleven years and cumulatively we have seventeen kids. And so a lot of my perspective has changed as a business owner in the last eleven years. When the Working Family Agenda came out last November, my first reaction was kind of being attacked as a small business owner. As I started to think about it and think about my business and who I wanted to be as a business owner and how I wanted to support my employees, I realized that I could change some things. And one thing that we realized is that, so we're an eight-month business, so it's, you get this impulse to be like, man, we really got to get twelve months of work in in eight months. Realized that that doesn't really make any sense because my employees still have to go home, you know, get the groceries, do all the things with their family. And so what we implemented is that everybody has to be out of the garage at six o'clock. It doesn't matter. We can get back to that tomorrow. And I think that the paid sick leave policy is another addition to that. I think that they work really hard. There's no difference between what they're doing and what salaried people are doing in terms of supporting their families and I think they need the same support. So I really think that the paid sick leave policy should be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julie Kearns, then Speaker twenty-eight, then Speaker twenty-nine is Joanne Sodak. I apologize for names I can't read.
Thank you, Chuck Liddon and Council Members. My name is Julie-
If people could physically come forward, if your name is something twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, any of those speakers.
Great, thanks.
Sorry.
My name is Julie Kearns. I own Junket Tossed and Found. It is a micro-business in South Minneapolis. We have currently one full-time and six part-time employees. And I've been involved in this conversation since September when it first kind of hit with a bang the first time through. And after learning more about it, coming to understand so many of the details as relates to it, I realized that it was something that I wanted to implement on my own. And so in January, as a micro-business, as a bootstrapped business, as a business that had just been through seven months of road construction on Minnehaha Avenue, I implemented it retroactively for my team, full-time and part-time. And that has been no issue. I just need to speak to the fact that all of the fear that's happening here is, I just think it's unfounded. And it's been a pretty simple thing to ask my accountant to accrue PTO, basically, at the rate that the original recommendation had stated. And we've had one person take one day. She's eighteen years old. She got kicked out of her house about six months ago and she was sick. She needed the money and I'm really glad that we provided that. And at the end of the day, I have a lot more power as a business owner to make change and to make changes in order to bring in more funds than my employees do. And I think we owe it to them to recognize that power dynamic and take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Speaker twenty-eight. Is Speaker twenty-eight here? Okay, and I'm going to ask other speakers to get in line, so if you could just hang on. I'm going to ask Speaker twenty-nine, Speaker thirty, Speaker thirty-one, if you can physically just start moving yourselves up here. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is LaBerta Porter and I'm a resident of South Minneapolis. I worked with the temp service with Food Specialty. I had only worked there for two weeks and I started to feel sick on the job, so I had to leave the job half a day because I felt sick. I had asked to get the next day off with the temp service. Instead, I got fired. I was on a ninety-day probationary period and I talked to the company that I was, the agency that I was working for and I did complain, but they couldn't do anything about it. So then I had to go around to other temp services and it took me like two months to find a job. I'm also a student too at the same time and I really support the paid sick time off because I feel like it's important to not myself, but also the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Speaker twenty-nine and Speaker thirty is Lovar Stewart. Speaker thirty-one Pasual Tapia. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Campbell Sodak.
Thank you.
I live in the Village of St. Anthony. I am retired school nurse from the Oseo district and I have listened to all of the statements from all the speakers and each one of them have valid, they have valid questions and they're valid concerns. But what I would like to do is talk to you in a few minutes about sick and safe time for the working poor parents who have children in school from K through six. As a school nurse, it's eight-thirty in the morning. I get a call on the PA. There's a child on the bus who's ill. I get my gloves, I get the wheelchair, I go out to the bus and the kid is thrown up. Bring the kid into the health office, get him cleaned up, and I ask him what happened. Well, my mom told me not to tell anybody that I threw up at home because if I stay home, she doesn't get paid if she stays home with me. This is the reality that has happened over and over again, not only in the city of Minneapolis, it's happening all around the country. Working poor parents don't have a choice. They either go to work and send their child to school sick or they stay home and don't get paid. It's not a choice. They need to get paid. So I, along with my group, Halkum Persons of Color Union members, we are in support of the sick and safe time. It is an ethical issue. It's a humanitarian issue. And I don't think there's any person in this room who hasn't been sick and had the opportunity to stay at home with their children. I think all parents deserve to stay home with their sick children. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty.
Hello, my name is Lovar Stewart. I want, I first of all empathize with the very small business owners that have problem, that this will present problems to and of course, business owners should, they should not have to be forced into doing what is right and what is fair and et cetera. And, but we've come to this because of companies like Enron, WorldCom, et cetera. So private sector argument is, of course, you know, we should leave it up to the private sector. Well, that doesn't always work out so great. So I read the Senate File forty-one and the House File five forty-nine and the way I read it, there's enough room in there to, there's enough in there for everybody. And, but I just want to share a quick story. I work for a company. We have about a thousand employees, et cetera, et cetera. I get a nice fair wage. Right now, I get five weeks of vacation and three personal days and I drive the kind of car I want, okay? And not only when I go on vacation, I can spend money on vacation. I'm doing just fine. My CEO, which gets an eight-figure income, is doing fine also. We are very competitive in the market, okay? We're pushed very hard. We have deadlines to meet. We deliver things, et cetera, and we have a ninety-nine point six delivery on time rate. So we're doing just fine and it's not, it doesn't have to be an either or, okay? And we don't have to use fear tactics to say that this is unfair and et cetera, et cetera. So, and I'm a single parent and there's been days that my son has been sick and I've had that time off, okay? And I raised my son by myself and so I'm doing just great. I drive the kind of car I want, et cetera, et cetera. So, and I'm here just to help others that, you know, that should get the same kind of salary and care and integrity that my company shows me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-one.
Muy buenas tardes, todos. Yo me llamo Pasual Tapia Vega. Vivo al sur de Minneapolis y vengo a seguir mi historia.
So good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak here. My name is Pasual Tapia Vega and I live in South Minneapolis.
Yo soy trabajador de la compañía de Prestige. Trabajo en la tienda de taras en downtown limpiando taras.
I'm a janitor and I clean the target in downtown Minneapolis for a company called Prestige.
Pues yo estoy acá. Gracias por darnos la oportunidad de estar acá. Pues como trabajador es algo que nos apoye en los días de enfermedad pagados. Pues yo hace cuantos años me enfermé de la espalda y pedí la compañía que me diera permiso. Me dio permiso, pero no me pagó los días que tuve de días pagados.
So thanks again for the opportunity to be here. I'm asking you all to support us as workers. A few years ago, I had an incident where I had to take time off because I had a back injury and I missed two days of work, but it was not paid for them.
Tengo dos hijos enfermos en México y por eso les puede ayudar. Uno tiene un corazón y otro tiene ausencia renal, por eso escasamente no puede apoyar. Muchas gracias.
So I have two children who are sick in Mexico and when I miss work and my check is short, I can't send money home to my family. One of my children suffers from a chronic heart condition and the other one has kidney failure. So on occasions when I'm not able to work, I can't send money home. So it's either me or them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker thirty-two is Stephen Suffrage. Speaker thirty-three is Joanne Sodak. Speaker thirty-four is Ryan Kennedy. And Speaker thirty-five is Chelsea Globbets. If people can physically get ready to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, all the people that are here today. My name is Stephen Suffrage. I work for the Two Ten East Lake Street McDonald's. I've been- I've been there for two years. Now, I stand before you as a, of a sort of a miracle because God has blessed me to come out of being addicted to these crack cocaine and marijuana in my life. I'd like to say with that, that now that they have put me on certain medicines and stuff like this to control me, the, I support this bill that we have here today because some of us, even though we go through mental, you might not be in my shoes, and I might not be in your shoes. We might get the different pair of shoes, but we still want to buy name brand, you know, so we can fit in. But all I really would have to say about this is that I believe that we, we as a people have let each other down. You know, we we are not helping one another. That we are making these statues and and things that would cause us to fail. I mean, and it never seems like what you do is enough. And it's kind of like being bonded, you know? And I think even though we have our differences, that this should work for everybody. This proposal should work for everybody. Rich, poor, middle, in-between classes, and stuff like that. I just would like to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to put this on the table. But I also have one quick thing to say. It's kind of like back in the day when there was slavery. They'd have the house person, and then they had the field person. And see, the field person didn't get what the house person was getting because the house person did the things for the house. But I think they should, we should still be set free from this and be able to work with each other to be on the same level because that would benefit me and everybody here, I think.
Thank you. Speaker 33.
Hi, my name is Mara Gunter.
So I had a different speaker for 33?
I switched. I, my individual number was 61, but due to time, we switched.
Okay, is Speaker 33 going to come back?
Yes, Speaker 33 now.
Okay. And that was Speaker, you are Speaker 61. Okay, all right.
My name is Mara Gunter. I'm here to share my story, but I'm also here with the room full of people that are also in support. I live and work in Minneapolis, and at 19, I was diagnosed with epilepsy. I'm really proud to say that I've overcome a lot. It's been really hard, but I now have two jobs, and I'm like really looking forward to going back to school in the fall. And I'm, sorry, and I'm, you know, able to support myself. And when I do go to work, both my jobs, I give 100%, but I may not be able to come into work. I, my condition is really sudden. I don't always know when it's coming, and I'm not, it's out of my control. And so when I don't come to work, it's really hard for me to not have paid sick days because it prevents me from furthering, you know, being able to take care of myself. I I think, you know, on a normal day, I believe that I'm just like everyone else. And I've been seizure-free for two months, but I'm always worried that my condition will prevent me from attending work and making my living. So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 34 is Ryan Kennedy. Speaker 35 is Chelsea Globbets. I'm going to ask people to physically get ready. Speaker Speaker 36 is Chris Fleck. Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ryan Kennedy. I live at 1416 Third Street Northeast, Ward 3. And I'm the Executive Director of the Minnesota Public Interest Research Group, or MPG. MPG is a nonpartisan organization that's been around since 1971, engaging young people and students in issues like this. I'd like to say first, as someone who manages nonprofit staff of 23, 21 of whom work here in Minneapolis, this is the right thing to do. We've been, we've been doing paid sick time for a number of years. When this conversation started, we brought our part-time employees on board with our policy as well. And whether it's, you know, a half percent of our wages, or 1% or 1 and 1/2% on a given month, and it will vary, that's the cost of doing business. And that's the cost of taking care of your employees and making sure that we as a, as an employer in this city are doing right by the folks that are doing the work for us. So I'd like to say that first. And I'd also like to add on, in terms of young people looking for employment, finding some employment in the city, being underemployed. I'm not sure if you all know, youth unemployment's about 2 and 1/2 to 3 times the regular unemployment rate here in Minneapolis. And a lot of those that are employed, nearly half are part-time workers, only half part-time employment. And I'd just like to say that when when young people actually try to stand up and work with their businesses, they they get shut down. When they, when they try to say, hey, we should revise our policy, when they try to go other avenues and say, we're going to take this a business-by-business approach, you you see things happen like the Jimmy John's workers, who were fired, who now it has been, the courts have ruled illegally fired because they were protesting for paid sick time. But not every person can take that to court. Not every young person can stand up, can ask for paid sick time at their job while risking losing their employment and having to fight out long, drawn-out court battles in order to get the justice that they deserve. There's really a culture of fear and a culture of intimidation in terms of not have, I mean, in some of it's a lack of skills, and some of it's a lack of leverage in these situations. But we need the city council to stand up and and do what's right for these workers because a lot of times, they're not able to do what's right for themselves in their own employment. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 35. Speaker 36 is Chris Fleck. Speaker 37 is Angela Bolden. And Speaker 38 is Kate Davenport. If people can please start getting ready.
Thank you, Vice President Glidden and President Johnson and the council members here today. My name is Chelsea Globbets, 1647 LeFond Avenue, St. Paul. I am the president of the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, AFL-CIO. We represent all of the unions and their families in the Western Metro. We have over 70,000 members as a part of our organization, and over 20,000 union members live in the city of Minneapolis. In addition to that, many of our members work in this community. As an appointed member of the Workplace Partnership Group, I strongly support the ordinance before you today, and I really appreciate the negotiations and the time that went into it from the community, from from business owners. This was true negotiations, and I really appreciated the accommodation and stories that we heard throughout this process. I also appreciate the structure that was set up to create these recommendations in this ordinance. You know, we've been talking a lot in our, in our labor movement about the changing nature of work. Technology is advancing. The gig economy is in motion, and our demographics are quickly changing, including here in Minneapolis. You can tell by just looking around you. As we look forward to work in the 21st century, we want to embrace this, and we are going to embrace it, just as the employers throughout the city are embracing this. So as we embrace these changes, we have to make sure that we're not doing it at the expense of minimum worker standards as these changes occur. All workers need to live with dignity and respect in our communities and in our cities. So not only do we have these major economic forces changing, we also have some of the racial, the worst racial disparity gaps, including in health and income and wealth and every indicator of life in our communities. So this policy alone isn't going to fix that, but it's a small step forward in maintaining minimum standards in the face of our changing economies and the change in our demographics. It shows that workers have a voice in this community. And to be clear, Minneapolis is not an island. St. Paul will be passing their version of this policy. We have worker committees in Bloomington, Brooklyn Park, St. Louis Park, working with their city electeds. And Chicago is even going to be passing their Earn Sick Time policy this summer. So I applaud the very local process that was taken here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Chris Fleck. And then our next speaker is 37 is Angela Bolden. 38 is Kate Davenport. And 39 is Stephanie Gasko. Speaker 40 is Rashida Credit. If those speakers could start getting ready, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Fleck. I am Director of Business Relations with North Central University here in downtown Minneapolis. I also serve as a volunteer on the East Downtown Council Board and a volunteer on the Minneapolis Downtown Council Development Committee, championing our 2025 plan to grow downtown Minneapolis. I'd like to read a brief statement. Esteemed council members and city council, I'm here today representing North Central University, a nonprofit university in Easttown and Elliott Park areas of downtown Minneapolis. We are concerned that the proposed policy to require employers to offer sick, safe leave will provide an administrative and financial burden to be determined to the health of our educational institution. The U.S. Department of Labor this week released specific standards as it relates to guidance for higher education paying overtime under the Federal Labor Standards Act. Since the federal government has recognized the need for different policy for higher education in employment law, you may agree that the unique situation in higher education warrants a separate look to broadly or applied policy, such as what you are proposing with the Minneapolis Sick Pay and Safe Time Ordinance. North Central University already has in place a discretionary leave policy for our staff that meets or exceeds the requirements of the proposed ordinance. Under our current system, part-time student workers, if they're ill for work shift, are excused without penalty and can make up their work time in a different timeframe. Thus, there's no loss of income. Here's what we're asking. We're asking for your consideration, a professional exemption from the proposed ordinance for our university and perhaps other higher education institutions in the Minneapolis city limits, specifically in regards to the policies' application of student workers and adjunct faculty. Despite the ever-increasing cost of higher education, North Central University reigns one of the most affordable private education options in the state, and we wish to continue to make affordability a priority for our students. Thank you for your consideration in entertaining higher education, or at least, thank you for your consideration in exempting higher education, or at least extending the implementation timeframe of this policy so that added research can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaker 37 is Angela Bolden. I'm going to keep reading until I see someone who's here. Speaker 38, Kate Davenport. Speaker 39, if you could come and get ready to speak. Stephanie Gasko. Speaker 40, Rashida Credit. Thank you, everyone. You can come forward a little.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Council. My name is Kate Davenport, and I'm here representing Eureka Recycling. We're a nonprofit social enterprise based in Minneapolis with a mission focused on zero waste. And we strongly support the ordinance for Earn Sick and Save Time in the city of Minneapolis. Although we are a 501(c)(3) organization, our two main demonstrations are financially self-sustaining. We operate a material recovery facility where recycling is sorted and a fleet of recycling collection trucks. And we were recently awarded the recycling contract for the city of Minneapolis Residential Recycling. All in all, we employ over 80 people who are paid living wage benefits, which is a practice that is far from normal in the recycling industry. Zero Waste is often characterized as an environmental movement focused on valuing resources. But at Eureka, it also calls us to value the people that are doing this difficult and critical work every day that provides us so much benefit for our community and builds our local economy. We are committed to taking care of our employees for the best, to the best of our ability. While the benefits of creating safe, secure, and healthy jobs undoubtedly help everyone, we are competing in the marketplace where most of our competitors do not provide the same level of wages and benefits that we do. This ordinance would create a structure that would support small local businesses like ours in providing reasonable and compassionate care for our employees without putting us at a competitive disadvantage. We definitely understand the challenges that employers face in a very competitive market and in unpredictable economic times that we are in. However, all of us are employees, whether we're salaried or hourly, and all of us face the same challenges within our households, a child getting sick or our own health. Providing sick and safe time is manageable for businesses like us, and we believe it pays for itself in employee retention, morale, and productivity. And I'll just state again that in the recycling industry, most, most of the industry has pretty low-paid workers that do not provide Earn Sick and Save Time with extremely high turnover. We have almost no turnover at Eureka. And this is because of the benefits that we provide in terms of living wage and Earn Sick and Save Time. And I think that has a business benefit, and we are definitely here to help other businesses figure out how to incorporate this into their business practices. So thank you for listening, and I really support the council in passing this.
Thank you. Speaker 39, Stephanie Gasko. And Speaker 40, Rashida Credit.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Gasko. And I wear many different hats as the person that I am. Growing up as a little girl, my parents did not have access to earn sick and safe time or any benefits for that matter. My mom's main care came from emergency room visits, where her stomach pains would get just so bad to the point that we would have to call an ambulance to come and get her because she did not have the the benefits that she needed to be able to take time off of work and take care of herself. My mom is still dealing with those health issues 20 years later because she wasn't able to care for herself. As a mother, I send my kids to school. I'm lucky enough to work at an organization where I have the access to earn sick and save time. There's a lot of kids in my daughter's classroom whose parents don't have that same access. They don't have that same benefit. So unfortunately, these little kids are going to school sick day in and day out because their parents have to choose in between paying the bills or staying home with their sick kid. As an organizer, working, organizing fast food workers all across the city of Minneapolis, I work with folks day in and day out who have to choose in between staying home and getting healthy or keeping their kids home when they're sick and having to go to work to make sure that they can pay the bills because one illness can make or break a family, and this has been going on for decades. And we have some of the worst racial disparities in the nation here in the city of Minneapolis. This is not going to fix everything, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. Too many people continue to have to choose in between work and their health, and that's unacceptable, especially when the people that we're trying to protect here don't have the voice that they deserve when these policies are being made. I was also on the committee for Earn Sick and Save Time as the only woman of color, speaking up for many women who I work with on a regular basis. And we need Earn Sick and Save Time, and we need it now. We need to ensure that it is strongly enforced, and we need to make sure that the workers, the people who are most impacted by not having this policy, continue to have a voice when it comes to enforcing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 40, Rashida Credit. I want to just say, Speaker 41 and 42, I believe, already signed up and spoke as Speakers 1 and 2. They were Madeline Gardner and Charlotte Zabawa. Speaker 43, Don Prentice. Speaker 44, Chase Elliott. Speaker 45, Hassan Hassan. If people have any of those numbers after 39, come forward, or if there was something else that happened that I don't know about on the signup list. All right, thank you so much. Thanks for waiting.
Hello, my name is Rashida Credit, and I stay in North Minneapolis. And I used to be a PCA worker, and I have a daughter right here. She was born with a terminal lung disease called RSVP. And by not having sick and safe paid time, when I took off to take care of my baby, which was approximately about 2 and 1/2 weeks, because it's contagious with children, and two, and I have actually five children, so I had to actually take her away from my other children to care for her so they wouldn't get sick. And I was actually fired from my job and not able to support me and my family because, you know, I had to take off for my daughter having a terminal disease. And, you know, with not being able to take off and be able to pay my rent and stuff, me and my family got evicted from our place. We had to go into the shelter. And now I'm still, you know, having a problem finding another job with being a PCA because I still have this problem with my daughter. Whenever she gets sick, I'm going to have to take off, and I'm not going to be able to be paid for that. So I can't get back into the health field because I have a terminal ill daughter that can't be provided for by not having paid sick and safe time. So I think it's very important that we get paid sick and safe time for kids, for our children that has terminal disease, for old elderly people that, you know, grand people, we probably take care of. It's desperately needed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there a Speaker 41? Okay. And if you could just give us our name and then go and sign up with the clerk so that we make sure we have all your name for the public record.
Okay, cool. Sounds good. Hi, my name is Candace Montgomery. I wasn't going to speak today, but then I heard some concerning things about potential amendments, and I wanted to just clarify some things on the behalf of the kiddos out there. So I'm a kid of a casual worker. I'm a kid of a low-wage worker. I'm a kid of a restaurant and a retail worker. And I'm a kid of a laborer. My mom worked 12 to 16-hour days to keep a roof over our head. Because she had to work even when she was sick, she ended up stressing herself out so much. she ended up stressing herself out so much.